Be me, isn't it? And I'm like, oh my God. And then I got another one to take care of and maintain, you know? I don't know what my level of responsibility is with it. And I'm assuming.
Yeah, unless they are authority managed.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. I just don't know. I've never. I mean, there's a lot of new stuff to do. Questions? Questions? Yeah. Of course, I'm seeing some completely different eyes in other people listening, you know, wherever you're in relation to whatever. Questions you're gonna ask, right? I just didn't know if it was appropriate to ask the money portion of it.
That strikes me nuts.
How are ya?
It shouldn't, but it does, because we're all here already.
Oh, you did? Oh, okay. Who were you? Were you down there? You go down there?
What do you think, Janice?
I'm waiting for it to tell me that we're going wide. It's flashing. This is a new system.
It's just, the river's just starting to go down now from all the rain we had.
Imagine if we able to call the meeting to order at six o'clock.
It's still plenty of water.
It's my fault.
But, um, but it's.
But I would never say that.
I would.
But more rain coming?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah, that's for sure. Is he waiting for the bell to ring?
Solid.
So there is a little.
There is, yeah. Which page are you on there? Twenty-seven?
Did you find a typo, Shandra?
We missing somebody, huh?
I found, I found only one typo.
In the minutes or in the actual?
I found in the minutes, and it's near and dear to you.
I know, it's my name. I circled it. I'm like, hey.
In the minutes?
Yeah. Yeah, but just like a paragraph down, it was spelled correctly, so I hadn't been.
I ordered it, saying, I found a typo. We live now?
We're live.
Something about. Yeah. Six something. It's six oh one. Call the May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two meeting in the Dexter Township Planning Commission to order. And by way of introductions and taking attendance, I'm Marty Stroud. The other planning commissioners are, to my left, your right, Maris Metz, Shandra Hurd, Christie Mayer, Tom Lewis, Bob Nester, and our other member, Kim Marinelli, is absent tonight. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda, conflict of interest review. Does any planning commissioner have conflict with tonight's agenda item? I see none. Approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any issue with the agenda as presented? Anything you'd like to add, subtract, modify, whatever? Seeing hearing done, the agenda will be approved as presented. Next item on the agenda is public comment, but just to explain, well, we don't have a lot of public out here tonight. There will be multiple opportunities, so this will be a general call to the public. We're about to go into the public hearing for the item that's on our agenda, the revision to the ordinance, and then there will be a call to the public toward the end of the meeting. So at this point, does anyone have anything they'd like to address us about that is not an agenda item? Seeing none, public comment will be closed. Which brings us up to our, our main item of business for this evening, public hearing for amendments to ordinance thirty-seven, the purchase of development rights, or PDR. Mr. Rohr, would you please present this to us?
Um, microphone doesn't seem to be working, but I'm just talking. So, um, yes, this is a public hearing for amendment to ordinance thirty-seven, purchase of development rights. This ordinance was passed by the Dexter Township Board of Trustees, I believe, back in two thousand and five. So it's been on the books for seventeen years. So there is a new committee at the township, that's the Open Space Land Preservation Committee, and one of their tasks and other charges is rewriting a land up in the ordinance thirty-seven. So procedurally, it was to come to the planning commission because of, it's actually, the authority for this is based on the township zone, so it's going to be in the Act of Area Action and Change Act, and that's what it's called.
Yes, thanks for the reminder on that.
So because it's one of those towns whose former mission zoning, they were acting for the township's own act, procedurally, it's a matter of the planning commission for review, and a recommendation of the board is simply to pass it then on to the board of trustees, who will make the final determination, approve the ordinance, amendments, or changes or recommendations. So it is a little bit unusual, I'm sure, if I'm familiar with ordinance thirty-seven, it hasn't been acted on and used in the seventeen years, but it is now part of the Open Space Land Preservation, a agenda that is about a potential, potentially, as an ordinance of funding mechanism, which will allow it to. So that said, I've asked Mary Lannick, who is the original drafter, maker of this ordinance, he is also the gentleman who's involved in all the amendments, has also been very involved in the Open Space Land Preservation Committee. So he is by far the most authoritative in this board. So I'll do my best to answer lots of questions, but this is not his only ordinance, it's a little outside my control.
All right, thank you. And just, yeah, just kind of, you know, bracket this, I guess, for the planning commission. As Mr. Rohr just explained, it's really a technicality that it's here before us. It's not really anything within our purview, and because of that, while there may also be a perceived political aspect to it, but my preference would be that, that because it has to come before us, that we do our, our thing here, hold the public hearing, and then move it along to the board. I think we would be better off, my personal opinion, not getting into the merits of it as a recommendation or, or not. I would, I would prefer that if you have personal interest in it, let's go to the, to the township board meeting. It's really their business, not ours. And meddling would not be the right word, but we have, we have ample opportunity to, you know, create our own issues. I would like to stay out of the township board's issues. So it's here because procedurally it must be, and certainly, anything you want to talk about, about it, any questions for Mr. Lannick or anything, I, I have no issue whatsoever with that, just when we're, when we're done with the public hearing, I would prefer that we just, like, check the box and send it off to the township board. Any issues with that? All right. I think, I think to better facilitate the, the public hearing, at this point, open it up for questions from the planning commission, especially if anyone has any questions for Mr. Lannick, or, you know, you see any, any issues that jump out. I did find one typo, but... And when we're done with, with that, I think, I think there's more value in the public hearing if we have any questions to be answered, and then we can discuss again when the public hearing portion of this is closed. So what is your pleasure at this point? Any questions, comments?
So, a question for Barry. Barry, did you have anything prepared to present to us, or is this you just fielding questions at this point?
I could, you know, created a small presentation to do, just to sort of get you up to speed.
If you care to, please, please do.
Okay. So you may know that the township board has, has approved placing a proposal on the ballot this November eighth to fund a land preservation program here in the township. And as David mentioned, this ordinance number thirty-seven has been on the books for a long time. It was originally adopted because there were some state of Michigan funds that were available to support the purchase of development rights on farmland. And one of the requirements of accessing that state funding was to have an ordinance on the books. The legislature, you know, sometime in the early two thousands, passed a, an amendment to the Township Zoning Enabling Act that said, if you're gonna adopt these ordinances, these are the things that you need to have in it. And so the one that's on the books now has all of those things in it. And then state funding was, was available for a few years, that dried up, and the ordinance has remained on the books as, you know, unused, because there hasn't been a funding source available. But hopefully that will change this coming November. In addition to that, the township board has allocated three hundred thousand dollars in this year's budget for the same purpose, so having an updated ordinance will be useful for distributing those funds, but also hopefully if we have a successful millage campaign this fall. So some of you may know that I have been staffing programs of this nature in neighboring townships now for a long time, seventeen or eighteen years. So I took the ordinance that's on the books here in Dexter Township and compared that with the ones that have been in practice now for quite a long time. And I think that David provided you with a BlackLine copy, so you can see the numerous changes that were made, to get to the draft that's in front of you here. The most notable of which I would say is the inclusion of criteria to evaluate properties that are primarily of a, of a natural feature as opposed to a farmland property. So there's both of them in there at this point. When we originally drafted this, you know, based on what the state funding availability was, it was just for agricultural properties. And other townships have, have sought to preserve natural features more directly, and I know that's, that's a, you know, substantial interest here in Dexter Township as well, because we are very blessed with, you know, really amazing natural resource properties as well as great farmland. So this draft before you covers both of those kinds of things. And, and I compared the criteria that are in place, that were, that were adopted in the original ordinance, and also the ones that are in place within other townships, and so there were modifications even to the farmland part of the scoring system to make it more, I think, usable at this stage. So that's what you've got in front of you, and your recommendation will go to the township board and, and be adopted. I think it's really appropriate to get this done now, because people will be voting on this proposal in November, and I think there's, there's value in having this updated ordinance on the books so that it can be on the website, and people can research it and say, well, how's this thing gonna work? Well, it's all right here.
All right, thank you. Aside from the content, the, my compliments on the way it's written.
Yeah, thank you. Try to make it readable.
Following through all the additions and deletions, it's, yeah, nice job on that.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else?
I guess, I was just curious about how section four is expected to work, where the owner could retain some residential development rights? Is that something that is done, like, if they have a parcel, is it, like, geographically subdivided, or how does that work?
So there are certain cases, and I think this is one of the requirements of the, the state statute, by the way, also, that you had to describe, if there was gonna be retained residential development rights, how that would work. There are times when we do farmland conservation easements where there are no structures on the property, or there may be an existing structure, a house, on it, that gets excluded from the easement. And many farmland owners want to live on their property, and so we want to be able to permit that, a residential structure to be built on a otherwise conserved property. So you specify what the location of that, of that, you know, future housing site might be in a survey upfront, so everybody knows this is, this is where we go. You don't want to plop it down in the middle of the field for a variety of reasons. So that's the, the reasoning behind why that section is in there. And it's on a case-by-case basis. There, you know, there are times when there are already residential structures on the property, and another one is not needed. This just addresses if there was going to be that kind of use going forward, how that would work.
So would that, would that allow, for example, say, the next generation of, of the family to construct a residence, even in spite of the fact that, that, that the property is under the provisions of the ordinance?
Correct. That's the kind of thing that we're trying to accommodate there, for a, a new generation or, you know, to, to be able to live on the property. I do want to emphasize that when a conservation easement is conveyed, it specifies certain things, like whether or not a house is allowed, and whether any divisions of the property are allowed. Usually they're not. Sometimes there are. And that's what carries the day. That's what the, the landowner, as the grantor of the easement, and the township as the grantee agree to, and everybody else that contributes funds to it is seeing that easement also, and agreeing to the terms that are, that are in. So any additional structures that would be considered in the future has to be in the easement. We can't go back at a later time and say, oh, we, you know, Maris wants to build a house on the property. Say, yeah, well, we didn't allow that originally. We're not gonna go back and amend the, the easement to do that then. So the section deals with how that would occur, but the easement is the final word on things, as to whether or not that can occur.
I, I've done a few of these personally, and I'm a little bit familiar with how it works, and, and what he's saying is exactly correct. You have the opportunity to create a building envelope, which I am doing right at this very moment, actually, on one of them, and, and that footprint, it's, at least for me, now, I would assume it's the case for everyone, it's a negotiable contract. You, it, it's a, it's a matter of sitting down and having a discussion about what you would like to do with that property. And as Barry said, you, it, it's all in the, in the deed to the property, once you've agreed to this conservation easement. It certainly carries with the property. You don't have to build out it if you don't want to. If you choose to sell it, you can sell it, but you don't get that building privilege on that specific location. So, and there are, and there are a multitude of other things that are, that are considered. And I don't, I suppose they still do that. They, they do a rather thorough investigation of the property before it even qualifies, to be certain that it doesn't have a contamination associated.
Correct.
Some kind of contamination. But personally, I think it's, I think it's a great, a great idea for the township. I, I think that it's a wonderful way of preserving properties that otherwise probably wouldn't have that latitude. I, I'm wondering how it's going to be used for developers, when, when the, when the property owner, take Zuzinski's property across the road here, or on Town Hall Road. A developer could, could purchase the property and then set aside a portion of that, within that development, for, for conservation. Would that be correct?
They could.
And, and would they then get credits? Would they be able to get additional development credits for doing that above and beyond what we currently have in the ordinance?
You mean, in addition to what they get for open space community?
Yes.
I would think that area is, if it's all part of the same parcel, you know, what all factors. The open space communities are creating additional housing credits based on the amount of open space. So in that open space, essentially, it does become a conservation, it can never be developed or defined as a site, not even developed.
Oh, that's, okay. That's, yeah, that's.
But that's a separate, it's a different kind, it's a different way to conserve open space.
Yeah.
But, and, and so would not involve the sale of development rights, because it's, it's a requirement of getting the additional units to conserve the land.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if they could, if, once this enact, once this is in place, would they be able to, at some point, turn that into a, a revenue source by selling, or holding a piece of it, holding a piece of it advanced, and then, and then down the road saying, well, I'm not gonna develop this, I'm gonna go ahead and get paid for the development rights on it?
So if it was a hundred acre property, say, and sixty acres was subject to the open space community, and they've clustered houses that got a little extra density, but they've conserved open space, none of that would be eligible for this kind of a program. But if the other forty acres were not included in that sixty...
It could be that.
Then it could be. That's the only way that it could. In essence, by using the whole property and having some open space set aside in that development process, they've conveyed their development rights.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I personally think it's, it's a, it's a great way to go if you want, if your, your heart is in conserving quality of real estate.
Were the easements that you conveyed, Bob, donations?
Part of it, I donated some of it, and then I, and then I sold the development rights back, and Maris's houses sort of wrapped up in that as well.
Got it.
And, and then I sold some property back to the conservancy, and then they put the entire parcel into the easement. And I've done that with them a few times, so it's, it, you, you, I think a lot of people don't get involved in it, because they think it's so encumbered that you don't, you don't, you're not able to do what you want to do. And there are certain restrictions. You, you, if you want to put, put a barn on, on the property down the road, you have to do all of that planning upfront, and I, and I did that as well. And Tom was involved in that one. It's, all of that stuff has to be done on the front side before you sign any documents. And when you do that, it gives you, it can give you a great deal of latitude with the property, and then still have the, the protection of it, so.
So that's an interesting detail, then. The retained residential development rights all need to be planned out in, upfront, for what you perceive your family may need, or what's...
Yep, exactly. Because once we ink that document and record it, you don't go back and change that kind of thing.
Yeah, a lot of, that, that's a critical part of it, too. A lot of thought really needs to go into that. That's a very good point. It just, you need to know, you need to know where you're going to be going with this, and what, what it's, what's...
That would seem to be critical for a farm family.
Yeah.
As an example.
And then the other, the other thing that is, that is, is beneficial to a minor extent is the, the tax benefit that they can also get on, on the property. As a result of it having been under an easement program, there's typically a reduction in taxes on it, because it reduces its market value.
Property taxes.
Yeah, property taxes, correct. I believe that's true, yeah.
Yes. That can happen. There's a, a state treasury bulletin from many years ago that, that directed assessors to consider that if a, if a property has a perpetual conservation easement conveyed on it, so that it limits the development to it, you can no longer assess it as if it has its development potential, because that's been conveyed. And so it depends on several factors. One is how long you've owned the property, and if the proposal A limitations have kept it, the taxable value on the lower side. But even so, whether it's farmland or natural area land, if it's got an easement on it and your assessment is higher than, you know, what, an appraisal showing the comparison, comparing the, the property to other properties that have sold with easements on it, if your assessment is higher than that, then you can make your appeal to the township and say, you know, you need to knock me down.
Right, and that, I think that is also another important thing when people consider this. I don't have to belabor this, I guess, but when they, when you do do something like that, it's very important that you get your property appraised at the, at the, at the closing, so that you know what the current value of it is without the easement encumbrance on it, and then you can have it appraised with that included, and so you've got some, a baseline to start with.
Anybody else have any other discussion, questions for Mr. Lannick at this point?
One other quick one. So I understand this is all voluntary, as far as the, at the property owner coming in voluntarily to the, and there is no mechanism whereby the township goes out and solicits?
Oh, the application to the program is voluntary, but you certainly can go out, and I certainly do that a fair bit, where we go out and solicit applications. You know, not every property is the same. Some are gonna be more interesting and more valuable than others, and so you go out and educate your landowners, and, but if there's somebody who's got that perfect property, you call them up and, and say, hey, did you know this program exists? And this application is here, and, you know, do you have any questions?
Is there any, being that this has been available in other areas or something, is there any history of abuse or, or leveraging on the parts of local municipalities to, to leverage landowners in one way or another?
As time has gone on, and these programs have been around for a long time, and there's been properties conserved, you're trying to build overall large blocks of protected land, whether it's farmland or, or natural areas. And, you know, if somebody's got that, that key property in between, then, you know, you, I wouldn't say there's leverage or pressure, but, you know, there's certainly an, an effort to say, you know, this program's available to you if you ever want to submit the application, you know, and, or call me if you've got questions. But that's as far as it goes. It's not, you know, not arm twisting or...
Specifically, no real history of abuse on, by any...
No.
Local municipality or something of that nature?
No. Yeah, there's, there's no point in doing that. You want, it's...
I would assume the incentive is kind of, is kind of contrary on one side, because you're losing tax revenue. So there's something of a check valve there to kind of not necessarily overdo the program?
There's never enough money to do everything you want to do. So even, even by leveraging other funding sources, which we've done with great success here in Washtenaw County, state and federal money, and then also, you know, there's a countywide program, and, you know, there's an NRA Green Belt program that doesn't reach out this far, but those are all, you know, funding partners for different projects. And none of us have ever, you know, put any kind of undue pressure on somebody. It's, it's a voluntary application. And sometimes it takes years for people to come around. I'm working on one in Syle right now that, you know, applied eight years ago, and then, and we bought some land from her for a preserve, and then she decided she wanted to do the farmland easement. And then lo and behold, a couple weeks ago, she renewed the application. She just, you know, things had changed in her life, and it was time to decide what she wanted to do with this property. So, you know, in that, in the meantime, we've continued to have a conversation, and, you know, lo and behold, one day the application shows up. That's, that's the kind of approach that I take to things, and I think everybody really does. It's, you know, we want to be on good terms. We're, we're working collaboratively, and we're offering you an alternative to responding to the developer. And that's, you know, going back to my land conservancy days, and I was the first executive director of, of the Legacy Land Conservancy a long time ago, back when I was a teenager. And I would hear so often from people, yeah, I want to conserve my land, but I, I don't, I can't give it away. But boy, if you could offer me money, and that's when we started running these publicly-funded programs, and being able to offer people money.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else have anything at this point?
I guess, I just had a question about section fourteen, which is...
Fourteen.
Yep, I have one, too.
Because it talks about how the preservation board will advise and make recommendations concerning monitoring. Is, like, the actual monitoring of the easement, would that fall under Dave's purview, or the board?
I have the same question.
Typically, that's the consultant's charge.
Okay.
Which would be me.
Okay.
It's similar to what David does in, in some other circumstances with, with, but it's, it's different enough. And also, if I've been the person that has been negotiating these deals, making the landowner contact and drafting the documents and bringing everything to closing, we've established that relationship, and I know the property really well. So one of the requirements of the grantee entity is to visit the property once a year and make sure that the agreement is being upheld. If there's no structures that are allowed, that there's no structures, or if there is a structure allowed, that it's in the right location, and the trees haven't been clearcut, and the wetlands haven't been drained, and there's not a gravel pit or a dump or anything like that. established that relationship. And I know the property really well. So one of the requirements of the grantee entity is to visit the property once a year and make sure that the agreement is being upheld. If there's no structures that are allowed, that there's no structures. Or if there is a structure allowed, that it's in the right location. And the trees haven't been clear cut, and the wetlands haven't been drained, and there's not a gravel pit or a dump or anything like that. And if there is, then this deals with the grantees' standing, the townships' standing at this point, to be able to pursue legal action to correct the violation of the easement.
Yeah, I just, I guess, so that would be something that presumably in the future you or a person like you would go, actually go out and look at the property once a year? Because I just didn't see the board having the time or the.
No.
Where itself to do that.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got a funded program and you've got, you know, even a part-time staff person, that's one of the things you charge them with doing. And that was actually what I was doing earlier today in Webster and in Ann Arbor Township. It's that time of year before the bugs come out that I go around and monitor some of the properties. I do some in the fall also. But, you know, I contact the landowner by letter at first, and I follow up with a phone call to say, did you get the letter? Do you want to come along? Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. And then we go walk around the property on beautiful sunny days and make sure that all those things that, you know, we agreed to originally are not being violated. And we sign a form saying, you know, I came over on such a day and everything was cool. And we stick it in the file, and I say, see you next year. I've only come across one instance, thankfully, of there being a violation of the easement. I know that Legacy's had to deal with a couple of them recently. And that was on a property in Syo that was in an estate, you know, the gentleman, the grantor, passed away. And the estate needed money to pay taxes, and so they authorized the cutting of large trees on the property, which was not permitted. Generally, in easements, there is a section on forestry that says you can, you know, manage your woodlot. You've got to have a plan from a registered forester. And you can't clear cut the woods, you know, you need to have some species and age diversity and so forth, but you're allowed to manage the woodlot. In this one Syo example, that paragraph was missing because the guy didn't want any trees to be cut on his property. And unfortunately, they went in and cut down, it was nineteen, you know, good-sized trees, for which they got all of like twenty thousand dollars. Actually, they cut thirty-one trees. Some of them were not on the easement area. They got twenty thousand dollars and ripped up the land and so forth. And on the easement part of it, they weren't permitted to do that. And so we notified them, and they said, yeah, too bad. And we took them to court. And there's, as of a week or two ago, this was two years ago, in April, that we discovered this. And so it was a two-year process to try to negotiate things ahead of time, filing a lawsuit, yada, yada. So we've now come up with a dollar figure to cover a number of costs. The value of the trees that were cut and removed that they weren't supposed to cut, damage that was done to the land, consultants that we had to hire. There was a disease called oak wilt that was discovered on, fortunately, only two trees on the property, one of them on the easement area. And the estate wasn't going to cover the cost of managing that. So we paid for it because otherwise the whole woods would be lost, and the surrounding woods, you know, on other properties. So a bunch of costs, and then, you know, attorney's fees and yada, yada. So I think it ended up being like seventy-five thousand dollars that the estate is going to have to pay for their mistake. But that's what enforcement's all about, is if there's a violation of the easement, then if you can't correct it, sometimes it's a minor thing, you know. And you just say, you know, like I have one guy in Webster that, you know, cut some smaller trees on his property. And I said, just don't do that again. Okay. And I don't want to take you to court over, you know, ten, you know, small trees that, but just, you know, but this one, you know, was a more serious violation. And so you have to have the standing to be able to pursue those legal actions.
Thank you.
It's a perpetual responsibility of the grantee, you know, of the township, to ensure that the agreement is being upheld. It's, you know.
Is that in the document at all about the requirement for annual inspections? I didn't see it here.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't think it's in the ordinance.
Because that is, you're right, that is, that would be an additional expense associated with the managing of the contract. The monies that are going, that will go, is there going to be a millage? Is that the plan? Do you have any idea what it would be?
Yeah, it's a half mil.
Half mil?
Mm-hmm.
And so those dollars then will be, they'll be used for purchasing properties, and they'll be used for managing the contracts?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, just a clarifying question? Since, as you mentioned, this is not our document, it's the board's document. They will be approving it, and assuming you will be opening this item to public comment for the area.
Momentarily.
Momentarily. Can you just define our scope of review? Like you said, we're not here to nitpick language, we're not even a part of that. But if we do have comments about content, just for me personally, I don't know if it's appropriate to share now or later in the review process with the trustees. I personally feel like some of the items I had to share could be shared later. And after public comment, will there be any further discussion?
We will discuss it again after public comment.
Okay.
But if there's anything that you'd like to get out that might be beneficial to the public before they comment, that would be good. I don't, I don't have any issues with any of that if you want to speak to it now. And again, when it comes to the township board, that's certainly up to you. My only thing is the mechanism, so we have to do this, and the mechanism to pass it along to the township board without getting, really without getting into their business, that's a decision for them alone.
Okay, so I will wait until our discussion.
All right. So at six thirty-six, we will open the public hearing for amendments to ordinance thirty-seven, purchase of development rights. Any members of the public here to address this?
I don't really know it. My name's Steph. Do I turn on?
Yeah, that thing's probably on.
There's a little button on the side, please. Okay, my name's Diane Monier, one three five one one, Island Lake Road. I am part of the Open Space Land Preservation Committee. And my property, seventy acres, is in process of applying for this particular stuff. I'm just here to hear what you guys have to say since I'm, basically, my property's going to be maybe with the ordinance, neighbors cross. But, yeah, everything, I agree with it. I mean, like I said, I was with part of the Open Space Committee, so we discuss it in long details and everything. So I just want to let you know why I'm here. Want to hear what people have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? At six thirty-eight, the public hearing is closed. Is there further discussion by the Planning Commission?
I have one comment, and I maybe, maybe I missed it, and I think it would probably be appropriate, the first portion of this thing. I didn't see in here where you gave value to wildlife corridors. And that was one of the things that Legacy was, pretty big on, on that terminology. Because the corridor itself is, can be quite valuable.
Absolutely.
So wildlife habitat's one thing, but providing, you know, corridors for transient wildlife would be, I think, a good term to put in there as well.
You're talking about in the section one?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. So that could go in number one, it seems?
That's where I have it. Yeah, that's where I put it, exactly. As an inclusion with the rest of them.
It could be wildlife habitat and corridors?
Right, that's exactly where I put it.
That sounds great to me. I did note, by the way, in section eleven, that it does mention including any costs necessary incident to such acquisition and the monitoring and enforcement of development rights easements. Doesn't specify an annual visit, but it does acknowledge that that is part of the purpose of having this ordinance in place.
Although section fourteen does say it shall, the board, preservation board shall at least annually ascertain where owner is complying. So the annual.
Yes, that's a good point also. Yeah.
I just want to point out the typo that I saw on, on the non-marked-up copy. It's on page eleven. So this would be section six, I guess, item seven. I presume that should say preservation board as it does in number six.
Right on, man. Good catch.
Anybody else have anything, any further comments, questions, anything you'd like to do with this?
So my only comments, you know, unfortunately, the master plan is under review. So when I look at something like this, I look for consistencies and inconsistencies and how it flows with certain terms. I did not even bother to look at the current master plan to see if terms were defined in a similar way. I did notice, and please comment or discuss if I'm reading this incorrectly, just in terms of consistency. And I am reading off of the draft that has the strikeouts and the addition language. Section one, number one, it talks about Dexter Township is a desirable place to live, work, and visit in large part because of availability of farmland, natural features, and open space. So I focus on the farmland, natural features, and open space. I go to the definitions, and the definition in section two, eligible land means farmland and/or open space. That whole word "natural features" is gone, and there's no definition of natural features in section two. Then you go to section five, the criteria. And the criteria, primary criteria, criteria, this is under section five eligibility, bullet number two, lands designated in the township master plan for agricultural use, uses, and natural features. We completely lost the word "open space." So I'm just looking at the consistency of how "natural features" is used, "open spaces" used, how they're defined. And then in one area, if I can put my finger on it, it, under the criteria section, the last sentence where it says "special natural features," like what is special natural features, how is that even defined?
Where is that reference again?
So this is section five, after primary criteria, then you have just criteria for selection. Looks like second paragraph that starts with appropriateness is determined, and it's the last three-word "special natural features."
Mm-hmm.
It's just the consistency of terms throughout. Sometimes it calls, it incorporates "natural features," sometimes it doesn't, and how "natural features" is defined within the "open space" definition. I feel like that could be tightened up a little bit.
Yep, I can see that. I would say that generally, natural features are included in open space land and distinguished from agricultural land. It's not farmed, it's sort of everything else, which could be old fields, it could be woods, it could be wetlands, it could be streams, all kinds of things. So.
I had noticed the same thing that Shandra did. And also, there's another time where it uses "natural areas." You know, and I know, like, you know what they say, consistency is a hobgoblin of, something like that. But that did, I had noticed that also.
So it's just an observation. I don't have any suggestion on how to correct that, or if it even needs correction. We all know what "natural areas" or "features" may mean to us, but the general public may not have that same definition. So just an observation.
Just a question for Ms. Miller. Are you able to, or in our minutes, will you be able to capture some of all of the points that we've made and Ms. Hurd's details? That will probably be our best and easiest way to convey that to the next, you know, next step and see if somebody wants to make some modifications. Anybody have anything else?
Well, I long at the same theme. On section four, number one, you use the term "substantial." And, you know, such property should remain substantially undeveloped. And I, that's a kind of subjective word.
But there is a definition for that.
Oh, there was?
Yep.
Okay, good, perfect.
Yep. Land on which there is no more than one residential dwelling unit, exclusive of housing units directly associated with a farming operation.
Okay.
That's the definition of substantially undeveloped land.
Perfect.
I don't want to rush anybody, but if you're ready, I'd entertain a motion to pass on to the township board, the Dexter Township Purchase of Development Rights ordinance drafted is before us.
I would make that motion.
It was moved by Nestor. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Mets. Any further discussion?
I have a question, I may. Bob mentioned adding "and corridors" to section one, one, and in section six, seven, adding the word "board" in after preservation. Do you want to include that in your, your motion to recommend?
In where, in section six?
Section six, which is the preservation board, number seven. It just says, the preservation shall.
Yeah, that makes sense. So let's pick up Bob's thing in the typo.
Yeah.
If, if you're okay with that and it's friendly with the seconder, then, yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, very good.
Any further discussion? Hearing on roll call vote, Mets?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Nestor?
Yes.
And Stroud votes yes. So that's, if my math is right, six yes, no, no, and one anti.
That's a big number, right?
I could do that one in my head. Next item of, not always, but at least tonight, I could do that one in my head.
I see your calculator is ready.
I'm ready. Next item of business is approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the April twenty-sixth meeting. The, well, I don't want to, I don't want to jump in. Anybody have anything before I get to my kiki little things?
Janice and I were chatting on the phone. We were thinking that Bob Nestor should get credit for his vice chair position.
That's what I thought also.
Both in the heading and in the.
I thought you guys let that go.
No, never.
We will not forget.
Do you see that at the top of your minutes, in the heading?
Yeah, so at the, yeah, in the heading, I happen to be the ZBA rep, but I don't know if that's, if that's important. It's more important to be the Planning Commission rep to the ZBA. It's more important to the ZBA than it is to the Planning Commission, if that makes sense. But since it's on there, it used to be the vice chair was the ZBA rep. That is not the case presently. But since it's on there, it used to be the vice chair was the ZBA rep, that is not the case presently.
Okay, so everybody change that?
Yeah, I don't care if you want to drop it or if you want to make a chair and ZBA rep. And then Bob Nestor is vice chair. And I think that's the only, the only thing that I had and, uh.
Potentially in the present, uh, sentence, just for consistency.
Pardon me?
Possibly in the present sentence, uh, Bob Nestor is vice chair, just for consistency. They've got, for the, for those of us that are present at the meeting.
Yes.
Do you see that in the April twenty-sixth minutes?
Uh, the one, um, I'm looking at draft five-three.
Draft five-three?
Uh, the date, the, the watermark.
Watermark type thing.
So I think you, I think you found that one when you and I were on the phone.
Yeah, I, I changed that, it should be in your minutes, that Marty Strong, chair, Bob Nestor, vice chair, Tom Loos, secretary.
Okay, this one's, this one's older.
Yeah, not in the copy that I'm looking at either, so, so excellent, thank you for, um, making that change.
Um, did we correct Maris's name and that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Oh, my gosh.
Trying to be picky, but just.
Yep.
Cause it is public record.
No, a name should always be correct.
But you got it right, like, the paragraph after, it's okay.
All good.
But we expect her to get it right each and every time. We, we have a high standard in the planning commission. Anybody else have anything? If not, could we have a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, modified, please?
Oh, I will move.
Move by mayor, support?
Support.
Who supported?
Um, Nestor. So move by mayor, supported by Nestor, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carried. Next agenda item, township board of trustees update, and I, uh, first of all, thank Ms. Mets for the, uh, for the thorough report. It had been requested a while ago that, uh, because people either watching on live stream or attending live, don't know what this says, they have requested that the township, uh, board trustees representative read the report. It's entirely up to you whether you want to or not.
Oh, you want me to read the whole report? I was just thinking.
I don't want you to.
I, I, I think I went a little crazy, um, it is my first time here, so I didn't want to like show up.
I was gonna say, the next one's gonna be shorter.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, honestly, the real highlights, um, are on the second page and, and the last is that we, um, that we have funded the road projects, so that's an awfully big number, I think that's a big deal. Um, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars have gone to the local road, are you choking? Mayor? Yeah, that have gone to the road projects, and in our last meeting, that was done in April, and then, um, just our recent meeting, we have seven volunteers that are gonna be participating, we appointed to the local roads committee, which is really exciting. Um, so we actually have a committee now for that, but we don't have a date as when I talked to Karen, trustee Karen Sekanga, and we, everybody knows she's worked long, hard hours on, um, getting these road projects together, and she's done a phenomenal job. And yeah, so she's gonna start coming up with a date and they're gonna get rolling with that. And we also hired Stantec, um, a company to come and evaluate multi-lake sewer authority. Um, and all the details are there in the report that I provided, and also in the minutes, um, you'll see a whole background about Stantec and what they do. And I think it's gonna be fantastic to have them in there for evaluation to see how multi-lakes may expand in the future. So I think this is, um, a long time coming and needed, so that is good, and let's see, anything else? I mean, there's a lot of just odds and ends stuff in here too, and that I don't think we necessarily talk about, if you don't want. Or if you have any questions for me, please ask.
That's, that's good stuff, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any, uh, any questions, comments? Which brings us to concerns of planning commission members, director of planning and zoning, township supervisor, and recording secretary. So, how about this time we start with Ms. Miller? Always do, but, but we, you know, we can babble up here and, uh, you're probably, you probably have all kinds of thoughts developed on, uh, what you'd like to tell us, so.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you for, um, finding all the years of my. Well, and, and my, my patron donor too, he didn't, he didn't tell me, so, so, thank you guys.
Well, there you go. Well, sincerely, thank you once again for doing such a good job for us and, uh, you know, that's a lot of hard tedious work. And I know you spent a lot of time getting every detail down, uh, that doesn't happen every place, so thank you.
You're welcome. Marty, I'm sorry, there was one more thing because it actually pertains to our meeting tonight too, and it was, I'm sorry, and, and just about, just for public record, for the VOT. So, we approved the millage, the point five, cause Bob was curious as to what that was, so we did approve the language for what was, what is to be proposed on the ballot. So that needs to be passed to the county clerk, they need to approve it, and if they approve it, then it will be indeed on the ballot for our general election. And that's a point five millage, so we did approve that language. So I just figured that was probably really important too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, we're pretty flexible, it doesn't, uh, whenever you want to say something.
Okay.
Jump in. Uh, Mr. Rohr?
Um, no concerns, just, um, master plan update, um, we have a flyer for the community survey that was being filed, tax bill early July. So, um, we'll provide a link, we'll also have some posters up around the hall and around the township, so, um, hopefully, uh, that should be open for about six and a half, seven weeks, hopefully get a lot of participation and, um, that'll start moving into the public education process as the summer is on, so, when we get a working draft, uh, from the planning commission.
All right, uh, Mr. Nestor?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
All set.
Ms. Mayor?
I'm okay, thank you.
Ms. Hurd?
No concerns?
Ms. Mets?
I think I'm done.
And I have no concerns. This is the last opportunity for public comment, any members of the public here to address the planning commission this evening? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Uh, future agenda items, Mr. Rohr, we think we're gonna have a meeting in June or?
No, I think right now we have no agenda items, June, we may have rather large agenda items in the fall, but that's still a question.
All right. Anybody have anything else before we, uh, before we wrap it up? Mr. Lenick, thank you for, uh, coming tonight and, and putting in all that work. If there's nothing else, uh, motion to adjourn to be in order?
I'll move to adjourn.
Moved by Mets? Support by mayor. All those, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carried, the meeting is adjourned.
We want to thank you for all that you're doing.